We just have one hearing tonight, but before we get into that, we start off with our public comment section of the evening. So if there's anybody in the audience tonight who has any comments to say that don't relate specifically to the hearing we're about to discuss, just raise your hand. And if not, we'll get started. Okay. Again, just one hearing tonight. And it is scheduled for 7:00 for Atwood Drive LLC. It's a major site plan special permit hotel, multiple curb cut, four-story, 80,000 square foot office slash medical building, 107-room hotel and a 4,000-square-foot restaurant at 23 Atwood Drive, map ID 39-41/43, as advertised on October 31st through November 7th. So, we got a presentation?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Brian Huntley. I'm with Time Bond here on behalf of Hospitality North. With me tonight, I have Peter Chrissie, who is a project engineer for the project that can answer most of the questions that I can't hopefully. We also have, on behalf of the applicant, we have two development associates, Travis Ward, as well as Kurt Shumway, on behalf of the ownership for the project. Very brief project history. This redevelopment of this project or this site has been discussed and conceptualized since the late 1990s. The city of Northampton has had several zoning changes, height changes. The site is zoned general business to encourage the type of development that we're proposing. And then more recent site, our project history is on the south side of Atwood Drive. Approximately three years ago, I believe, there was a similar major project that was permitted by the city of Northampton that includes two office buildings, one of which is essentially complete and occupied. The second is nearly complete and should be occupied shortly into the beginning of the new year. Existing conditions, let me, I guess first, and I should have done this originally, is the site that we're talking about is a 7-point acre parcel, which is essentially comprises all of the north side of Atwood Drive here in the city. It's the existing site of the Clarion Hotel and Conference Center, as well as all of the associated parking and the outdoor amenities to the rear of the hotel, including pool, tennis court, outdoor event area, and a small building in the back of the site. This property falls within the general business zoning district, as well as the floodplain overlay, I'm sorry, the floodplain protection district. As I indicated, the existing use is essentially, it's a hotel conference center with a restaurant lounge, integral to the hotel building itself. The neighboring uses are, as I indicated, the relatively new project to the south, which is medical and general office. We have the Route 91 off-ramp to the north. Interstate 91 is to the west. And then to the east is Route 5. Across the street is the auto recycling yard. And as a point of interest, the floodplain elevation defined in this area is elevation 123 feet, which is based on the flood mapping, the flood insurance rate map, as well as a flood insurance study that was done for the Connecticut River in this area. Proposed redevelopment, the proposed site, and you can see there's a layout down at the bottom, and I don't have, I guess I have a cursor here, so you can see, this is the four-story, 80,000 gross square foot, so 20,000 square foot footprint office building, which is a mix of general and medical office. This outline here is the proposed 107-room hotel. And fronted on Route 5 is a 4,000-square-foot sit-down restaurant. Parking is, and it's outlined in the submittal, there's a table that is totally legible on this sheet as well, but essentially, the parking breaks down that we have 487 spaces proposed. And the breakout shows 317 for the rear building, 107 is required for the hotel, and then 163 for the restaurant. From a phasing point of view, we're proposing that the first anticipated phase of the project would be construction of, trying to get the cursor here again, of the office building and the associated amenities that go along with that, with the yellow line essentially drawing the different phasing and follow-on phases to be the hotel and the restaurant. Not necessarily in that order, depending on how the marketing of the project can move forward. It's anticipated that the office building would go first, but then a follow-on phase would be however the site owners can, are able to get tenants and get the project leased out to build. Yes, sir?
It says 487 parking spaces, but it would appear to add to 587 spaces.
Yeah, I think that restaurant should read 63, not 163.
Okay.
And I apologize for that.
Just want to make sure.
That does look like a lot. And as indicated in the application, the project phasing that we would propose would be to continue to operate the existing Clarion Hotel for as long as possible during construction of the first building to allow for a cash flow situation where the existing use maintains. And prior to certificate of occupancy, prior to finalizing of the office building, then the hotel would be taken off-site. And that was a proposed schedule that was included in the application that we submitted that would make the project move forward in a financially feasible manner. Internal circulation, and we have on here vehicular address, vehicular access, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. And get the cursor back here again. Essentially, the yellow highlighted areas are the sidewalks, where based on comments that we received from staff early in the process, we've essentially interconnected all of the uses throughout the site with pedestrian-friendly access and sidewalks. So each of the uses is interconnected, as well as a connection to the street, into all the parking areas and throughout the parking areas. Vehicular access, the site will be accessed from Atwood Drive. There are no curb cuts proposed currently or in the future on Route 5 or Mount Tom Road, as it's called here. There are three curb cuts that are proposed on the north side of Atwood Drive. We have one here on the easterly side of the site, which aligns with the, basically where the existing curb cut is into the hotel area. And then there are two towards the rear. One of them is off the cul-de-sac at the end with the intention that it would give more direct route and better access to trucks, to the loading dock here at the rear of the building. And then there's an additional access point here just east of the proposed office building as well. Bicycle accommodations, we're proposing bicycle storage. I can't tell, but I believe it's right here on the side. Yes, right there, there's a proposed bicycle rack for storage at the facility. In addition to, there are currently bike rack, which are in approximately this location on the south side of Atwood Drive, which are, were intended to serve the south side development from a previous project. Traffic impact. So the board has a full traffic study that we did, an analysis of existing conditions, future conditions, both with and without build for 2018 anticipated traffic. What we came up with through that process is that we do trigger five of the signal warrants, which would justify installing a signal at the intersection of Atwood Drive and Route 5. The little blow-up on the screen shows the approximate mitigation that we're proposing, which would be a signal at the intersection with some dedicated turn lanes and straight lanes, both on reconfiguration of Atwood Drive and some striping and some pavement changing, pavement marking changes on Route 5 to give us dedicated left turn into Atwood Drive from Route 5 North, and then a straight-through run on Route 5 North as well. We did analysis of both the Con Street roundabout, as well as the I-91 signal, which are both projects that are coming onboard and that are in process. I know the, I don't know the schedule on the Con Street roundabout, but I do know that the I-91 southbound ramp signal is underway, and I saw the concrete was poured out there the other day for a signal that's going in place. Point of note is, we have been in discussion with MassDOT in Northampton, the District 2 office, to be able to talk about what we're proposing here for a signal and how that can be interconnected. And the good news is that the existing I-91 signal, as well as the proposed I-91 signal, both have interconnection back to Mass Highway District. So we should be able to provide a signal here as well that provides connectivity back to the district, so all of those signals can be linked and can be timed together, which really provides a benefit to traffic flow through the area, and it gives us the traffic improvements that we need to provide mitigation for the additional traffic that would be online as part of this project. From a PVTA point of view, as part of the previous project, which would dovetail well into this project as well, there's been a lot of discussion with PVTA. They currently have a stop on Atwood Drive for the southbound PVTA, I'm sorry, the northbound Route 5 PVTA bus line, where it actually runs on Atwood Drive, loops around. The picture in the lower left-hand corner is of the bus stop that exists for the Atwood Drive stop. The site layout that we have proposed actually has a crosswalk with a handicap access from the proposed north side development to this PVTA bus stop as well. And then, like I indicated, from bike accommodations, we're proposing bike rack on the project site, as well as there's a fairly, currently underutilized bike rack on the south side that's available for use as well.
Brian?
Yes?
I had a question about that, why you've got that up. On the revised plan, just go that crosswalk that you just mentioned going across, but it didn't appear like there was an AVA ramp or any way to maneuver around the bus stop if you were just walking?
You're absolutely right. And that was a comment that was picked up by the DPW as well. And in our response to comments to the DPW that I copied you on about an hour ago, we will have a revision that includes handicap accessibility, so that crosswalk will end with a handicap accessible location to get to the bus stop.
And then, can you make it wide enough so even a wheelchair could come around and get to the sidewalk? Let's say if they were going to the other, a building on the other side, or, I mean, how would you maneuver around the bus stop if your bus stop wasn't a destination?
Yeah, I don't see an issue with that. So essentially extending the sidewalk, and whether we're east or west of this area, I think we could, we could interconnect that crosswalk and sidewalk to the existing sidewalk for the south side development. We would include that in a revised set of construction drawings when they're developing. Okay. From stormwater management point of view, the site, and as I indicated in one of the earlier slides, the existing site is approximately five acres of impervious. The proposed site is 5.28 acres of impervious, so there is a slight increase in impervious area on the site, which from a stormwater point of view is going to provide us with a mix of redevelopment and new development. The majority of the stormwater management features that were designed on the site essentially addressed the site as if it was new development, which is in line with the DPW stormwater management requirements, as well as the DEP stormwater management handbook. So our design includes collecting stormwater on the site through both depressed landscape swales and grass swales, as well as a system of catch basins, manholes, where we discharge through, some of the larger pavement areas go through some treatment units, which are, you know, storm scepter-type treatment units. Discharging too, there's an infiltration basin that's located here on the rear of the site. Some of the smaller areas are actually going to discharge overland too. We have a bio-retention area on the northwest corner of the site here, as well as a bio-retention area on the southeast corner of the site. There are two proposed swales that are paved swales with some, with some rock outlets that will discharge stormwater directly into the wetland system to the north. And that was a request that came from the Conservation Commission, because there are currently, I believe, five or six whales that discharge stormwater to this area. They were concerned that if we pulled all the stormwater out of there, that it had a potential of changing the ecology of that wetland system. So we did change our design to provide some additional stormwater discharges to the north. Those don't go through any type of proprietary structures, because from a grade point of view, as well as a property line point of view, there was no way to discharge stormwater through a subsurface system and then into that wetland system. So essentially, the stormwater system has been designed to retain and treat, you know, every storm up to and through the 100-year storm event. At about 4:30 this afternoon, we actually received the permit from the DPW for the stormwater discharge on the site after a couple of different iterations and some questions back and forth with Doug McDonald on that. One of the things that this does is it separates the private system from the public system. Currently onsite, a significant amount of the paved area was collected and discharged through catch basins into the Atwood Drive system, which then discharges to the west through an existing outfall into the wetland system. The new, the new proposed pavement and the new parking areas, we've separated that system. We're keeping it onsite, we're treating it onsite, and then we do have an overflow that ties into the city system prior to discharge. But as you can see from the stormwater calculations that we submitted, the actual peak rate flows to the city system is reduced dramatically, so it should alleviate any pressure that's on the city system at that location. We have two additional, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You started out with the number of square footage that's pervy, impervious and before and after.
Yes.
Give me that again.
Currently, it's five acres, and in the proposed condition, it's 5.28 acres. It's approximately a 6% increase.
Okay.
The infiltration basin, like I indicated, has an outlet control structure that's the primary outlet to the city system. And then we also have two culvert discharge pipes that discharge to, or just outside of, the wetland to the northwest of the basin, as well as an emergency overflow. The stormwater system was designed so the basin stays out of the 10-year floodplain, which was a request by the Conservation Commission, as well as the DPW. So at least during a statistical 10-year flood event, the site stormwater system will operate as designed and as intended prior to any inundation from the floodwaters rising from, from the Connecticut River. Site design from a utility point of view, this went through a couple of different iterations as well, based on some discussions with the DPW. Essentially, from a sewer point of view, there's an existing pump station that is approximately here at the west end of the cul-de-sac, existing on Atwood Drive. That's a municipal pump station owned and operated by the city of Northampton. Currently, the entire hotel discharges their sewer by gravity to Atwood Drive. It then flows to the pump station, and it's pumped back up to Route 5 and then off to the wastewater treatment plant by gravity. In the proposed development, the office building will discharge by gravity into that pump station, and the hotel will discharge by gravity also through the existing Atwood Drive system, I'm sorry, and to the pump station to be pumped back up. But the hotel in this scenario, I'm sorry, the restaurant in this scenario actually connects by gravity to the sewer line that's in Route 5. What that essentially has done is when we compare the flows from the existing uses onsite that go to the pump station compared to what's proposed here with the new hotel and the office building, by removing the restaurant from that, the flows actually will decrease in proposed conditions that go to that sewer pump station compared to what we're currently seeing now. So from a capacity point of view, we've had discussions with the city. They have no issues with the capacity, they had no comment on that. You know, further beyond that, and it was indicated in our response to comment, as they requested that the applicant would donate a onsite generator for emergency situation, for power outage situation, are, the applicant and the owners have agreed that at the balance of the project, when the project actually moves forward on all phases, they would be willing to make that donation to the city. So the city would have emergency backup power for that sewer pump station, you know, in perpetuity, as long as they maintain and operate the pump station. Water sewer, our water service point of view, there's an existing water line in Atwood Drive with sufficient capacity, so the proposed buildings, the office building, as well as the hotel, will connect their services to that existing line that's, that's in Atwood Drive. The restaurant wouldn't, would connect to the water line that's in Route 5 currently. Again, with discussions with the DPW, there's no issue for capacity, there's no concerns there. We've worked with Dave Sparks and the Water Department to come up with our connection details that meet the requirements of valving, and long-term, any of the final construction drawings, along with the mechanical designer of the building, will also be coordinated with the DPW on what their requirements are for metering and backflow prevention as well. Go ahead.
Just backing up to the pump station.
Sure.
The capacity's down, but used to come from a hotel is greater than what will come from a hotel and the office medical building.
Right, because the current hotel has a restaurant and lounge in it as well. So those are, and these are statistical numbers that are based on Title V regulations, Title V calculation. So statistically, by removing the restaurant from the, that's currently in the hotel and connecting that directly into Route 5, that will actually reduce the flows that are going to the pump station.
What's the Fed count of the existing hotel? The new one's 107?
The existing hotel has 127, 127 rooms. The new hotel will be 107. So, I mean, from an impact point of view, hotel to hotel, and especially from a traffic point of view, we assumed that that was essentially a wash, because 127 to 107, from a traffic point of view, wasn't a significant change. But from, from an analysis for the sewer flows, the restaurant is really where the difference came up for the, for the flows. So from a private utility point of view, the, similar to the public utilities, the anticipation is that gas communication and electric will come from the existing services that are in Atwood Drive currently to be connected into the new buildings. Regulatory compliance, I guess this is, this is where we've stepped through the process so far. There was an ENF that was submitted to MEPA, which was based on, it's called a total, total wetland impact, because we had more than a half acre, I believe, of wetland impact. And in this case, the other wetland that we're talking about is floodplain, because the entire site is in floodplain, as well as the traffic trip generation put us in a place where we needed to submit an ENF to MEPA. That certificate by MEPA indicating that there's no additional review necessary was issued last Friday for the project. Conservation Commission, we submitted a notice of intent, which essentially got us through the local regulations, as well as Wetland Protection Act for the wetland systems that are on the periphery of the site, as well as all of the impact to the floodplain and bordering land subject to flooding. That hearing was just over an hour ago, and that closed and was approved then. DPW stormwater permit was another permit that we issued concurrently with the site plan approval that you have in front of you. That permit was issued, as I indicated earlier, by the DPW this afternoon. The two permits in front of us are the access permit by MassDOT, which is required for the signal installation, as well as, because the project does connect through Atwood Drive to a state highway, which is Route 5 out front. That has not been submitted, because typically, we would wait until after we had the local project and local approvals in place, and then we'll put forward with the final design for the intersection improvements and the signal to go to MassDOT for that. And then the NIPAD's EPA NOI is a construction-based permit that would be submitted to EPA within a couple of weeks of when construction actually starts. I believe that's the project summary in a nutshell, and I would love to entertain any questions that hopefully we can answer to, to give you an idea of where we're headed on the project.
Is a sit-down restaurant McDonald's?
No. I don't know if McDonald's is a sit-down restaurant, but I think our intention is that it's not a drive-thru restaurant, based on all of the traffic analysis that we did and the site access and the site analysis. So I don't know that I have an example of what a sit-down restaurant is, but it is not a fast food with a drive-thru that, that was included in any of our impact calculations.
Yeah. McDonald's and not drive-thru.
There are just a couple of questions on the, on staff comments. One was some of the small stuff on the light fixtures that were suggested. The cut sheet shows two different things. One is a flat lens, one is kind of a fisheye lens, and...
It's not a fisheye lens, it's intended, and I believe in the previous project, you made that a condition of approval, and we, we would be matching the project across the street, I believe, from a lighting point of view.
It's the same fixture, or similar to, or...
Certainly similar to, I would anticipate probably the same, but I think we'd like the flexibility, but certainly not having a fisheye fixture is, was our intention from the start, to minimize any spill off-site.
Can you compare the site space difference between the outline of the current hotel facility, which has a lot of stuff in it, and the, and the space on the ground of this new thing, more or less?
I guess what I'd say is, it's very similar, that the current site has the hotel, the parking area, and then towards the rear of the site, there's the pool, the tennis courts, and then beyond that is a, is a lawn area where there's some outside fence. The...
It's the footprint of the building itself I'm curious about.
So that's probably the best one to show there. The footprint of, I mean, I guess this, this shows because the, I believe that's a blue outline, certainly on the southwestern north side of the existing hotel footprint. That delineates what the limit of the floodplain is on the site. So I think that gives you an idea of the shape of the existing hotel building in that plan, and the proposed four-story office building that's going to the west is actually narrower in width than the existing tennis courts are, but in that approximate location.
Sheet three has the footprint of the Clarion, and then sheet five would have the footprint of the proposed...
Yeah.
But the Clarion diagram doesn't have square footage, which is really what you're asking, I think.
Do we know the square footage?
It's big.
It's definitely big, and it's sprawling. And that's, that's the benefit of a project, is that we're looking at a much smaller footprint and going three stories instead of the...
And that's what I was trying to, that was what I was trying to figure out, like, how much smaller of a footprint it is. I would think it was.
I don't have those.
Okay.
It looks like so much parking.
So I had some curiosity about the storm runoff, but the, what's happened in the meantime is the people that know much more about that, the DPW, have now issued, issued...
Right, right.
So I think I'm fine with that. I, I would, they're doing the calculations based on hotel being similar to hotel, but the age of the existing hotel and the water usage considerations for the new construction, I think would be, would create much less stormwater runoff. I mean, much less, you know...
Water consumption.
Water consumption, thank you.
I believe that's true.
Yeah, I mean, it ought to be. But like I said, that, those are the things I was kind of thinking about, but that, the DPW is my answer. Yeah, exactly.
Well, the pervious surface, they sort of you're worried about.
Well, that was a different question, and that's, I ask about that, but they've been through Conservation Commission, which is also, you know, more in their specialty area than me. I was happy to see that they had been to, already been to the MassDOT traffic engineer. I mean, I, there again, that's the person who's going to know the most about connecting I mean, I, there again, that's the person who's going to know the most about connecting to Route 5 and what they're going to have to do with the signals. I can't say that I've got anything really bothering me.
I see some renderings or elevations. Do you have any information? There are some on the on the drawings that we have, there's some information on elevations of the proposed office medical building, but nothing regarding the restaurant or hotel.
We included a typical hotel elevation, and to to be fair and honest here, the the intention is that the project is is, permitting is most important so we can come up with a clear timeline on what can be leased and when it can be leased, so we can come up with a development schedule and make the project work and go forward. So the intention is that, as I indicated, the first phase being the the office building, which has had the most amount of time and the most amount of design effort put into it, which is the rendering I have here that I started with in the slide, that is anticipated to be the first project going forward. Beyond that, the idea is that we want to include the opportunity for this hotel, this new hotel to be developed on the site, as well as a restaurant, with the idea being that we recognize that at any time, any changes come forward based on what the market would bear, what the area wants, what the opportunities are, we'd be back in front of, you know, the planning board where our developing plans change from what would be approved in the project. But the idea is that we can't sell the project until we have a permit in hand for the project, and so there's a little bit of a chicken and an egg there to try to come up with and crystal ball exactly what would be the most desirable in two, three, four, or five years after we get this project moving on the heels of the project on the south side of Atwood Drive. We did our best to come up with representative samples of what we were looking for in square footages and actual impacts, you know, both from utilities and from traffic point of view. That the idea is where we where we would vary from that, we would need to come back in front of you to talk to you about what the changes are.
I guess my concern would be if you vary from that, you'd come back. But what if, for the sake of argument, you don't vary from what you're showing, but we don't know what you're showing because you haven't figured out what it's going to be yet? You've got the footprints and where they're going to be, but everything from parking to elevations to function of the restaurant is yet to be determined. So would it be in in any case, whether you change or not change when you develop either one of the other two phases, you'd come back?
I I think the hope would be that if the hotel looks exactly like what we're proposing, that we would be okay from a permitting point of view. But I think from a, from the the restaurant and getting, you know, approval and coming back to the board or at least staff to look at elevations on what we would propose for that, we're absolutely, you know, fine with with coming back to you for those those kinds of changes.
What special permits are required?
Special permit?
For the restaurant?
No, special permit for the use of a site for a hotel and for medical office and for the multiple curb cuts. So there are three special permit aspects, and the rest of it, being over 2,000 square feet of development, requires site plan approval.
So the office building, part of this project is to be for medical use? Is that what the...
Our our analysis shows a split between medical and general office.
And parking calculation was based on a split?
It's it's a it's a backward and a forward calculation where, you know, we're trying to maximize the site, maximize the development envelope, the development envelope, as well as the marketability of the project. So we, you know, the the parking numbers match a split as proposed and is outlined in the details within the drawings between medical and general office space.
And the hotel, the design of it, what the hotel looks like is going to be based on whatever tenant you get for it, right?
Right.
So it's going to look like this this motel in an airport or that motel in an airport.
Right, and I mean, Mary Kirk can help me out with what we use for a template here. You know, this is an off-the-shelf four-story hotel that is 107-room hotel. This is the elevation view that we took for it, and the footprint that we have in the drawings goes hand in hand with this hotel. I don't know that this is the brand and this is the look that it's going to go with in the end. But all of our impacts, all of our assessment was based on this hotel. But we did not name the hotel because we don't have an agreement with whoever they are.
Through the footprint issue, to maximize the site, have some general compatibility with several different hotel decisions going forward, which we haven't made. That footprint gives us some flexibility for several different types of, but they're all, with the exception of the exterior finishes, you know, we've done the Marriott and Hollygarden half, and so on and so forth, we've done. We may not go quite to the degree of the Marriott-type finish, but we don't, we don't know what the finish will be depending on whether we're franchise A or franchise B. They'll have some mandates to us, and we just haven't got there yet.
I think that you could easily create a condition in in the permit that says, you know, if, certainly for the restaurant, you know, any, the prior issuance of building permit for the restaurant, they have to come back and show the elevations and show the final footprints and show if there's any modification to the layout in terms of impact to parking or landscaping or anything. And then if this sort of is a good enough placeholder that if they did end up with something that looks like this, that would be approved, but anything that was varied from that or had a varied footprint also would trigger site plan amendment. Again, to look at if there were shifts in footprints, how does that impact the parking and the landscaping and the all of the other site pieces in addition to the elevations? And, you know, you've done that on other projects, so I don't really see that as a, you know, an issue moving forward.
So it means we can take out this sentence, number two here about minor amendment?
No, I think you should have a condition that creates it, that establishes the the point at which they need to come back for an amendment. And the amendment would just address any footprint changes or elevation changes, but it's site plan only for those, you know, specific items. And but overall, you approve the project subject to any amendments for the final facade elevation.
Yeah, it seems to me that usually for a site plan, we have a little more detail about what's going to happen.
Well, I was going to say for for a footprint issue, that's site plan.
Right.
And it's it's technical, yes or no, does it meet the parameters and so forth. A hotel is special permit, and so that gives us a little more latitude as to, does it fit, does it not fit, and bigger bigger picture questions. But if we limit the subsequent review to a site plan, then we're limiting ourselves to a footprint technical, you know, dimensional argument versus a bigger picture.
Right, so I think that, right, the bigger question is that you should approve tonight is, is a hotel appropriate at this location?
Right.
And is generally the footprint appropriate in this location? And so if that's a yes, then okay, then you're just left to dealing with the final details of what that footprint looks like.
Which it seems like we're in agreement with that, but but when they come back in three years with those details, will that be a site plan review or a special permit?
Yes, that would be a site plan, because you've already approved the idea that a hotel is appropriate on the site. It's just a matter of how it fits, and, you know, it could be that at that point, they need to, they want to move parking spaces around because the, it's not exactly a rectangle or something like that.
So we could conceivably say that this was not a suitable site for a hotel. I mean, it would be kind of silly, but... So essentially, we're going to approve the site plan for the restaurant and the hotel. Well, not for the restaurant, for the hotel.
Well, you're approving it for the restaurant too, because there's all this other connectivity issue, sidewalks, the landscaping. So if they can just plunk a box down where the restaurant is supposed to be, then all they need to come back is show you and show you are the facades. If the rectangle's a little bit different, then they might need some other adjustments in the site plan. When they come back.
I think it should, I think it should not take very much to trigger them having to come back. The minor, the minor amendment would have to be really minor, and it's a little hard to...
Well, I think the term minor is really, in the whole scheme of thing, this giant project, this 80,000 square feet of office, plus hotel, plus restaurant, that's the big pick, that's the big project. But when they're really coming back to you, it's just the final details. And so to the extent that that's minor compared to the rest of the project is...
Well, the meaning of minor means that staff could approve the changes, and they wouldn't have to come back to the meeting?
No.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm comfortable with, the restaurant to me, to me personally, everything makes sense here, and from zoning, it all is agreeable with me. In the future, Phase Three, when the restaurant comes, that's a site plan review issue. The hotel, because we don't, again, because we don't know what it looks like, I would like to have that open to a special permit amendment versus a site plan amendment to give us a little more latitude in what we're looking at three years from now, or five years from now, or whatever. Not that it'd be argumentative, just we've got a placeholder, which is fine. We agree big picture, it's going to work, but when you come back and whatever it's going to look like, that should, to me, be a special permit discussion, not a site plan review. Does that make sense?
I am, I would try this flavor on it. If if they came back with a hotel that was four stories high, that had 107 rooms in it, it fit the footprint, then I think that we planned the the whole campus around that, we worried about traffic, we worried about stormwater, and, you know, all of the pieces that are going on right now. The restaurant is the one that it's more, that I'm having a harder time saying, oh, if it fits that box, then it's fine. It's it's the most unknown piece of the development so far, and it has the most variability in what it can turn out to be, because it's a McDonald's or it's a sit-down restaurant, or it's a, you know, I heard you say it's not a drive-through, but how much traffic that restaurant generates, is it a, you know, breakfast, lunch, and dinner? Is it only, is it a nightclub associated with the hotel? Those will create very different things that, that's the kind of, that's the piece I want to have a conversation about when it comes back. I think the hotel is either going to match the box or not in more, it feels like it will. And so I could go to the the site plan step with the hotel more easily in my head than I can with the the idea of the restaurant.
The restaurant isn't, tonight, the special permit.
Right, there's no special permit for a restaurant. You could easily say this is a special permit, or this, the approval is for a sit-down restaurant, no drive-throughs are allowed, period. Unless they come back and specifically amend, we want to do a drive-through, and here's how it's going to function, because it's going to totally change the way that would function. And I I think that it, I mean, my recommendation to you all would be that even if it does fit in the box, you still want to look at the elevation. So that would, no matter whether it's a smaller box, the same-sized box, or a bigger box, it still should come back to you for final elevation approvals. And maybe they want to make some modifications to landscaping based on that tenant that wants to locate there anyway. So I think all of that, my recommendation to you would be absolutely that comes back to you because you don't have a final tenant, and you want to see what the windows look like and where everything's facing and and all of that. And that's site plan, and I guess I would go back in in terms of the hotel. I think if you feel like the hotel, when it comes back to you, its site plan, isn't meeting the special permit that was granted, then at that time, you say, this has to come back for a special permit, we can't grant this right now. But I don't think that, I think that you can easily separate and say, we looked at the general site plan, we're approving the site plan, and we like the the hotel is in appropriate use here, but we want to look at the final details. And I guess I would encourage you not to require that it be a special permit amendment, because you can make that decision about whether it's appropriate to have a hotel on that site, and it doesn't much matter where the doors are per se or the windows and how they function, I don't think, on the site, or what it looks like. I guess it's more of a site plan issue, because you've seen sort of the typical off-the-shelf hotel, which is likely to locate in this vicinity.
I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I was going to say, at the risk of confusing it a little bit more, which I don't want to do, I I guess the, it seems like the question is more about the appearance than necessarily the use and the impacts when we're looking at traffic and utilities and stormwater and so on and so forth. So I guess what I would like selfishly to, if if possible, in within that is, I don't necessarily want to have to come back for a full site plan review of a restaurant, given that all of our impacts that we've calculated so far include a 4,000-square-foot restaurant. But, I mean, is it, is it truly the the appearance that the board wants another crack at? If that's the right term to put there?
I think it's...
Or the use, or?
I think it's, I think it's both. Use since, appearance since we don't know what it looks like today, and and use, if it's going to be a sit-down, a breakfast-only, a nightclub, or whatever, that would impact traffic. And and so that would be, I guess that's still not, that wouldn't, I don't know if that's special permit review.
No.
It's not, it's not, so, yeah, so...
But I think part of the site plan submission criteria are submissions, is a submission of elevation.
Absolutely.
So that piece is blank.
Absolutely.
So that certainly...
Right.
Automatically sort of triggers site plan amendment. Because you don't have that piece finalized. And so I think that even if it were, I I think you could evaluate the traffic impacts at that time when it comes for site plan amendment, if it happens to be, you know, a 24/7 operation versus just a lunchtime restaurant. But I I think that you, that's part of, that could be part of the, when they do the final tenancy and outfit, you know what it's going to be, and you can look at that at the time as part of that amendment.
We we would then submit an impact statement comparing to what was proposed originally
Right.
for the board to review.
Right.
Do you have orientations settled on, or or that's going to depend on the final?
For the restaurant? No, not at all.
Okay.
It was, it was essentially a footprint and the impacts associated with it, so we had a placeholder for...
We'd need sidewalks.
Well, the sidewalks are shown, it's set up to be, because you're required to have access from the street and throughout. So that's what those sidewalk is shown, even though there may not, you know, the precise location, let's say there's a door on that side, they might move the sidewalk closer to the door or at the door.
Well, so it...
I'm sorry, and then the hotel orientation is set. It just depends on what it's going to look like.
When it shows the restaurant up against the road with no parking in front of it, so when you approve this, it wouldn't allow you to relocate it elsewhere on that?
Agreed.
Okay. The next question I had was, are you firmly committed to having a hotel there? Or is there a chance that maybe there won't, won't be marketable, and you want to change it to an office building or something like that?
I think that that's certainly an opportunity, and that's a possibility looking forward down the line. That that could be a different use as well.
How firmly are you committed to having a hotel there? Pardon?
Economic decisions will help us make that decision. The the demand for the office space at this stage has been strong, but it's a great location for a hotel.
Well, it seems to me, as a bottom line, we're being asked if, if on this property, if you can have an office building, which we obviously have already set precedent for, and it's the same type of office building, it's a split purpose, a hotel and a restaurant, which we already have a hotel, and the hotel has a restaurant. So I'm, I'm after the kind of details of what what's it going to look like and how's it going to function, and what's the traffic movement going to be and all of that. But I'm not really sure that's what is asked of us at the moment.
Well, I think you, I think what you would assume is they've set it up to have the traffic, the functionality as shown on the plan. So they have the parking area, they have the in, the access ways, they have the pedestrian crossing. So to the extent that any of that changes, that's going to trigger an amendment.
Right, I agree, that's not what's being asked of us now. I just want to be sure that what we agreed to now allows us the opportunity in the future to have that discussion. Any other questions from the board?
I can actually go back to your question now, that Jean did some analysis. The existing hotel footprint is approximately 58,500 square feet.
That's twice what the proposed hotel is, right?
The proposed hotel is about 15,000, yeah. So the the existing footprint, where where the the building touches the ground is 58,800. In the proposed condition, all three buildings, as they're drawn, the total footprint is 39,300. So that's about a 25% decrease.
All three, that's including the restaurant.
That's including a 4,000-square-foot restaurant, right, right.
The hotel's 15,3?
Yep.
There's a square piece of parking in the front part of that. Is that parking in counting attached across the street? What is that parking?
Yes, that is parking for the development on the south side.
You've gotten the brownie points for that, for for parking for the other side of the street.
There's, that that parcel is not included at all in the civil. There's no calc, none of the parking calculations, none of the impact, none of the site, none of, none of the impacts. That's a separate project that's built out.
Yeah.
Just, maybe this goes back to Franny's question a little bit. Is this an economically viable project if all you ever build is the first building?
Yeah, as far as, I'm not exactly, I understand precisely your question.
Well, I'm just just curious, and it's not necessarily our purview, I'm just curious that, you know, could it be that market conditions change, economy changes, you build the first building, and you never do the other two? I mean, are we going to end up with a building that can't sustain? that can't sustain itself, and, you know, we end up with a one vacant building and a big empty lot? You know, I guess from a community standpoint, just-
It certainly won't be built unless there's enough occupancy to justify building it. We're not doing anything on speculation. If that answers your question, it'd be a lot easier to have activity on other parts of the site. But, yeah, we're not building a spec building if that's what you're asking.
And the certificate of occupancy, we won't have that for the office medical building until the hotel, the existing hotel comes down.
Correct.
So the apartment, it wants to be available, that it is viable.
But, but because of the duration of construction, we, we need the ability to start construction of the building while the hotel is still online. So from a phasing point, you're hoping that's fair of the board to-
Questions from the public? I don't know if anybody's here. Is anyone here from the public? No?
Well, I just wanted to note, you know, DPW's comments mostly relate to details about check valves and water and sewer lines. And so those, I think, can be consolidated and taken care of at the DPW end in terms of condition that they comply with the city standards for connectivity. And then the only other thing that they recommend is a condition that states that as offered, the sewer pump backup generator be installed prior to the final closeout of the last building. And that they also want to see revised construction plans prior to issuance of a building permit, just to make sure all those details did get put in on the plans. And then the crosswalk issue about-
When you said the proposed generator-
Prior to the completion of the last piece. So that says you could have the office building and the hotel both going through the pump station. And the restaurant is the piece that's not going to go through there. So if that never got built, you would still have the city in the same position.
Yeah. I mean, you could change that to the, the completion of the hotel slash office building.
I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, because-
After that, it's not about-
Phase two or phase three, it's, the restaurant's not tied in anywhere, so.
Right, right.
I, I think the idea behind it was that it was given by the developer, you know, from a financial point of view, when the project reaches that, that pinnacle, that the entire project has been built out. That there, there's not a requirement or an obligation for the developer to donate that generator for the project. It's an existing sewer pump station that the, the DPW has a generator, they've been operating it this way since the late 60s, I believe it was, when it was constructed. So I think the idea was that the, the developer, you know, assuming success throughout the project at the last development point, would then, you know, write, write the check to the city, if you will, for that donation at the end.
I, I can't remember what you said about this, the sewer from the office building or the proposed building on the west, is that a gravity feed, or is that, is the pump needed for that?
It, it, it gravity feeds to the existing pump station on the site, yes.
So they only have to worry about the, the generator after the hotel is built. Right?
Well, if, if then, I, I think what they're suggesting is this is above and beyond what they, you know, DPW's concerned about the long-term viability of the existing system. So this would help support for the longer long-term. So because the restaurant is gravity-fed directly to Route 5, it's not going to go through the pump. So yes, it would be up to that.
And the hotel's gravity-fed with the existing system to the pump?
To the pump, right.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I know how all of you all are going to think about it. I just think if the generator, I'm just trying to assess whether it matters. I'm sure they're going to, you know, want to take the full advantage of having all three buildings completed and having the full project complete. But I think there's some rationale for going either way with that.
I would agree if-
Was it required?
Yeah, if there's, if it was required, if it's a freebie by the developer, then I don't know how I feel about making that a condition as to when they're going to provide it.
They offer one?
Yeah.
Right. And, 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 I mean, to, to your point, there's, there's actually, with, with what we're proposing to connect, to connect to the pump station, there's actually a reduction in flows compared to the existing hotel that's been discharging to that pump station, you know, for, for the life of, of that facility. So, I mean, we, we feel like it was an additional over and above, it wasn't a requirement, it's, it's not a, it's not a regulatory requirement to put, for, for the developer to put a generator on that pump station.
And then the only other item, I guess, would be the, you know, just ensuring about the crosswalk and ADA as a condition, ADA crosswalk or landing pad. And then I just wanted, I had raised in my staff memo to you all about the width of the Atwood Drive at the intersection and the pedestrian crossing width of that signal. And there's two lanes, you know, a left turn and a right turn, and I'm just not sure there's, if the applicant wants to keep left turn and right turn, I think those lanes should be narrowed so that the crossing dimension for pedestrians is much less than what's shown. If you could go over that dimension again, that would be helpful.
And I, I guess I don't know what that dimension is because it was our anticipation that that entire intersection was going to be subject to Mast dot purview. So we're going to fall into what their requirements are for lane width, for the layout, the access, and the permit, so.
Well, they're not going to require you to have a left turn and a right turn lane. That's an option that you all want to take on. And there's also, we also probably have flexibility in the dimension of those lanes. Are they 12-foot wide lanes? That's probably unnecessary. You could go to probably 10-foot lanes because you're at a signal, you're going slowly, and you don't need the width, the full width of a standard, you know, highway lane. So I guess that's the issue.
I don't know what those numbers are. I mean, I, I can certainly tell you that we, you know, it's, it's, it's in all of our benefit to make it as narrow as possible because it's less impact, and it's less pavement, and it's, it's less. But, but I do believe that some of those intersection standards are going to fall back to Mast dot on what the radii are and exactly how that all shakes out. And, and I agree, I mean, the, the left turn and right turn is what gives us the additional flow, and it improves the, the operation of the intersection. It's not necessarily mandatory, but it makes it-
I think the, our traffic analysis was performed, assuming the signal was developed under the build conditions, and that did include a left turn and a separate right turn coming from Atwood Drive. So I think we do need those two lanes, but I think the lane width-
But what was the level, I mean, was the level of service so dramatically different with just one lane?
I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that either.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know how, and, I don't know how you all think about it, but maybe, maybe it's not an issue if there is a pedestrian signal and a push-button signal that allows, you know, a minute or five minutes, the wider it gets, you know, if that standard's in place, that I suppose the pedestrian can take as long as they need to take, as long as the cycle is.
You could put an island in, too, and make it even more complicated.
I know I'm biased by thinking about the geometry and the function there now, and the fact that that's not a highly, you know, the, the area's not pedestrian-friendly. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a rare occurrence. I don't know that that, that we need to be that close-minded in thinking about what we want at the intersection because that's not going to stay that way, particularly not with this development and others going there. But I, I think that Mast dot will, will dictate certain things about the intersection, but I'm with you, they're not going to tell them the, the lane width on the, on the site itself. But it seems like to me that they've got the same incentive that we do in, in narrowing the lanes as, as everyone is tending to do now. And so I, I mean, I, if we did condition it, I can't imagine they would, that, that would be problematic unless they did run into trouble with Mast dot, and I, I just-
Well, maybe you could put a condition, then, there would be 10-foot wide lanes, and, and then if DOT doesn't allow for that, they can come back and, and address it at that point.
With a minor adjustment?
Well, I mean, you could decide whether that's important to you all, or whether it's a staff-level review to, you know, if there's a letter from DOT saying, no, your lanes have to be 11 feet, then that's pretty clear. And I don't think that would rise to the level of needing to have a hearing about it.
Right. Brandon?
Am I, am I done with that, that part? My understanding is the only bike racks in the new project are at the office building? Because we certainly require bike racks at restaurants and hotel, hotels.
At hotels, awesome.
There's, there's a fairly large precedent with the last.
What we've done with Carolyn's out on the first two buildings was, the original plan was for two fully-covered bike racks, each with 12 spaces. This bike rack, as you saw in the, in the photo, on Atwood Drive, was centrally located for the first, supposed to be for the first building, and then marry a second, equal-sized one for a total of 24 for the second building. What, after real experiences of the first building being open, we saw that a structure like that centrally located, people just by nature wanted to go and chain their bikes to the rail at the front of the stairs. So Carolyn and Wayne understood that, and, and what we've actually done is now use this one as a central rack and installed two smaller, freestanding, uncovered racks so that they're more appropriate, close to a building. You can imagine, a big, huge structure cannot go right up against the window of the building. So the, the main centrally-located one is the, the larger one, somebody that might be there all day for long hours, where if you're just a visitor and coming and going, the smaller bike rack is more appropriate, closer to the building. So the owners are more than happy to accommodate a smaller rack that in real life will be used more than something centrally-located.
No problem, but where are they?
Well, those, those, I guess, to follow up that, those don't necessarily have to be placed so much because they're of size where they can literally go in a parking spot. Depending on what, what actually comes about, they can be right up against the walking path or in the closest spot outside of the handicap spots or something to that extent.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure the planning board is going to require some, so you have to put some thought into it.
Well, what you could say, since the hotel and the restaurant will have to come back for an amendment, you could indicate how many you want to see on that plan when it comes back for an amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just a matter of fairness. We've been through-
Yeah.
Been through one of these, and, and it was just unthinkable.
And just for reference, a 40,000-square-foot building in this case was allotted a six-rack bike rack.
Right.
So if that gives you any perspective on what the future could hold by square footage and how the bikes needed.
I guess I'm not clear what hardscape and landscape will be. Oh, I see it now, phase one. Okay. I, I hadn't seen the, the phasing. So everything, so this entire parking lot, once the hotel comes down, will be built as part of phase one?
That's right. That's right. As well as all of the stormwater and infrastructure and everything in support of all the necessary pavement and building that's needed for those, for that building.
Okay.
Public comment is still open? Somebody?
I'm over closed public comment.
Second, all in favor?
You're done, you can sit down.
Well, I, I guess, at the risk of it already being closed, I would have one thought suggestion that when we go back to the lane width, is it possible that a condition could be something along the lines of minimum lane width acceptable to Mast dot for the intersection? So we're not obligated to come back if we can't meet a 10-foot requirement, but we are cognizant of minimizing how much asphalt and how much the, the pavement widths are.
Suits me.
Or if we could say 10 feet unless more is required by Mast.
10 feet or minimum accepted by Mast dot gets a minimum lane width.
Yeah.
Right.
That sounds good.
So we had a couple issues. One, the, the handicap accessibility to the bus stop, which they said they do, but that should be a condition.
And that widening the concrete there.
Yep. Still more is approved, cons comm approved, the lighting, no fisheye lens should be, do, we just want to say no fisheye, or do we want to make it comparable to south side?
Just say similar to adjacent property?
Yeah, or if they wanted to do something different, I don't know that, that necessarily matters, just as long as it's not a fisheye. I think, I mean, if they have a different design that they come upon.
They have to read the requirements anyway.
What's that?
They have to meet the requirements.
Right, right.
We've got bike racks at both the hotel and restaurant. So when they, when they do come back, they just have to show them.
And anything about DPW?
You mean?
Do we need to condition anything about?
Oh, I would just, I would suggest that all water and sewer connections be done in accordance with DPW standards, including requirements for tie cars, valves, et cetera. And then all plans shall be amended to address the technical details as required, showing compliance with the city standards. And prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit final construction documents for review by DPW to confirm compliance with the utility designs. And then this pump station, where do we, the, the backup generator, as offered by the applicant, prior to issuance of the final CO for the last building, a backup generator for the sewer pump shall be installed for the existing pump station consistent with DPW and building code standards? That work?
Well, I don't, yeah, the last building is kind of vague.
Well, I think-
No, not if they stay on the plan. I mean, they have to come back if it's a fourth building or-
Well, to me, if you say the last building, it means the restaurant, and it's not applicable.
Well, isn't that what you all decided?
I've been in for all of that.
It's not physically applicable, but it's monetarily applicable because it's not required. So they're, if they're going to offer that up-
Yeah, but the purpose of it has nothing to do with, I don't-
It doesn't, but, but-
Well, I don't care.
It's not a requirement, is what I heard.
And do we want to put a condition on not a drive-through restaurant, or can that be the way it is now, or?
Yeah, absolutely. So you could say, you know, the, a sit-down restaurant is approved, no drive-through or slash fast-food restaurant. And then, you said, so let me just get the DOT standard, the width of Atwood Drive lane shall be 10 feet or minimum acceptable width?
To Mast DOT.
Okay.
The other thing about that is that I don't know that Mast DOT is going to require the pedestrian signal.
Right. So actually, I think you should have a condition in there that the signal installation should occur, actually, the timing of that as well. Signal installation should occur concurrently with the construction of the four-story office building, and should be activated within six months of the first CO of that building, or?
I don't know that you want the pedestrian signal put in and planned until you get the whole intersection done. So I just think it needs to be a condition, but I don't know that I need-
Okay.
The timing on it should not be out of phase with the rest of the work they're coordinating.
So in conjunction with the intersection?
In conjunction with the intersection design, it's a condition that we have a pedestrian signal.
Oh, I was, I was, my first condition was the signal insul, just the traffic signal installation-
Right.
Should be, should occur concurrently with the construction of the office building is number one. And that's just about timing of when that signal should go in. And that it should be activated within six months of the completion of that building.
Okay.
But the, then, a second condition about the pedestrian phase on the signal, that the signal shall include a ped phase.
If you think that signal's going to go in with the first building, I guess I wasn't, I didn't have that in my mind, that the timing for the, for the intersection design and the signal would be done by the time they finished the office building. But if I'm making assumptions there, and you think the signal will be done for that first building, then the pedestrian signal should go with it, with, with the traffic signal.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know that you, we had the conver, I don't, I certainly didn't have a specific conversation with the applicant, and you might want to get a nod from the applicant, if that's okay?
Why do they have to be tied together?
Well, I guess, I think because the impact, I think the traffic study shows that there is a demand for a signal. And so, you know, you could see a situation where maybe a different kind of developer might say, oh, look, I got my permit for all this stuff, but you know what, I can't get the signal done, and I'm getting all these other vill- get the signal done, and I'm getting all these other buildings done, and maybe it's not to their advantage, so maybe they will get the signal done, and the timing is an issue. But I guess, that's part of the traffic mitigation, is that signal, to make the function of that intersection work.
Well, and putting the signal there, putting the hardware up and getting it, really isn't dependent on MassDOT. I mean, it's their road, but it isn't dependent on all the other timing, traffic control devices that are all play, need to play together eventually. So you can go back and do the signal timing when MassDOT finishes the other signals that they're doing.
Right.
So, yes, I've heard you, we should do it at the end of the first building, and it should have a pedestrian crosswalk.
Right. And so then, the signal shall include a pedestrian phase with push-button activation. And I think, you know, I can understand where DOT might not want a full four, or two, or three crossings.
You wouldn't want a crossover to the car.
No, no, no. So I think the issue is really just the Atwood Drive crossing.
Yes.
But make that clear to DOT, that that has to be part of it. Yeah.
Any other conditions? Somebody want to make a motion? See a lot of finger pointing.
He's looking at it, I've got it.
Oh, I thought, I thought Ann was going to do it.
She's all disheveled.
I move we approve major site plan special permit hotel, multiple curb cuts, four-story, 800-square-foot office medical building, 107-room hotel, 400-square-foot restaurant, 23, 4,000-square-foot restaurant at 23 Atwood Drive, map ID 39-4143. With conditions.
Second time, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For all of our discussion, I think that's pretty clean.
Yeah.
If you wait 10 more minutes, we can adjourn exactly at the same time as the last meeting.
Oh, yeah. If we're done early, I could go out tonight, but my son is home alone tonight, so, yeah, I got to go back and pet the dog and eat dinner.
Isn't that what the phone is for?
I know. We had, you referenced that you were going to send minutes, but I don't...
I didn't get them.
Yeah.
I wonder why.
Not enough minutes in the day.
I move for adjourned.